City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
(inaudible).
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Rainey.
Is it Rainey?
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Yep.
Alderman Nguyen. And Alderman Wilson is not here. So that's seven to two.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 27, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. I've been asked to announce that there is a white BMW in the parking lot with its top down and it's raining.[45.46][45.46](Laughter). The first item on the agenda is Mayor's Proclamations and Public Announcements, its Youth Action Ministry Juneteenth Recognition Day 2014, and Public Service Recognition Employee Awards, and 2014 Preservation and Design Awards. Carlos, are we ready for the preservation? You want to do public service first, City Manager? All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. We're here tonight to celebrate the service of a number of our employees who have served 25 years or more. A number of those employees were not able to join us this evening, so first I'd like to recognize them. Janice Daz from the Library, 25 years. Timothy Taylor from the Fire and Life Safety Services Department, 25 years. Richard Woods from the Public Works Department, 25 years. Donna Williams Kent from the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department, 25 years. Stephen Goldenberg from the Police Department, 25 years. Claude Girish? I'm looking for the community development. Gershay from the Community Development Department, 25 years. Joseph Moskell from the Fire and Life Safety Services Department, 25 years. James Krantz from the Public Works Department, 25 years. Jamie Vega from the Utility Department, 30 years. Michael Anderson from our Fire and Life Safety Services Department, 35 years. David Berman from the Police Department, 35 years. And Archie Oliver. Archie is on a second tour of duty with us as a civilian police employee, so that, plus his time as a sworn officer, is 45 years of service. So please join me in recognizing them.[157.01][157.01](Applause). We do have three employees here celebrating 25 years of service. Mayor Tisdale, if you could do the honors and the well. Mr. Gustafson from our Human Resources Division is here as well, so thank you, Bob, for your great work in organizing all of this. And so I'd like to ask Chief Rich Eddington to step forward. And with him comes Jeff Jamraz, Deputy Chief of Police, celebrating 25 years of service with the city.[187.26][187.26](Applause). We've had some last-minute changes as to who's here and who's not. So Tim Taylor from Fire and Life Safety Services, who I thought I did see. There he is. Chief Clyber, if you could come forward. Tim is celebrating 25 years of service with the city.[226.01][226.01](Applause). Also here is Donna Williams Kent from our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. Mr. McCray, if you'd step forward with Donna. Her celebrating 25 years of service.[250.51][250.51](Applause). And our last recipient, celebrating 25 years of service, is Becky Biner from the Utilities Department. If she could step forward.[274.06][274.06](Applause). And Mayor Tisdale, if you could stay there. What we do for those celebrating years, 25 years or less, we give them certificates at departmental meetings. We've been having luncheons and other opportunities to recognize those employees at that time. The City Council, however, does not have luncheons or staff meetings. So in order to recognize our representatives who have five years of service, I'd like to ask Colleen Burris, Mark Tendem, Judy Fisk, and City Clerk Rodney Green to step forward and receive a recognition for your five years of service.[324.27][324.27](Applause).
Thank you. What about you?[327.27][327.27](Laughter). (Applause).
They're not with us at this point this evening, but we'll make sure they get them. So if I may, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're so proud of the men and women who serve us with the city of Evanston. And as you've heard this evening, 45 years of service from Archie at the Police Department, 35 years from Dave Berman at Police, lots and lots of long-term service. And we could not do what we do and be the great organization we are without the service of dedicated men and women like these. So thank you for the opportunity this evening to recognize them. And that concludes our presentation.
Alderman Burris.
I think there's someone else up here who's had five years of service. Mr. Bobquith.
Not yet.
Close. It's close. Thank you.
I'll get my certificate next year.
All right.[424.12][424.12](Applause).
And with that, Madam Mayor, we can move on then to the next item, which is the presentation of our annual Preservation and Design Awards. Carlos, I'm not sure, like, the Chair of the Preservation Commission will come up and conduct the honors.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alderman Council. I'd like to first say thank you for this opportunity. This has been a great year for the Preservation Commission. We've accomplished quite a great deal, and we've had an outstanding year for awards. I want to first thank the jurors. Phil Castillo of the Office of Helmet Yan, Jennifer Morris of AKRF in New York, and Saraj Sahir, a senior planner with the City of Elgin, who helped us out with our jury this year. We had many award applicants, and we were unfortunately unable to give everyone an award, but the ones that we have are an outstanding list. What I'm going to do is I'm going to mention the architects, contractors, and recipients of the awards ask you to step forward and join us at the front. We'll describe the project, and you'll receive your award. If you could stay up at the, stay in front of the lectern with us for a minute, we'll take a photograph when we're finished. Okay? The first award we're going to give this evening is for proper rehabilitation and restoration. If the owners, represented by Northwestern University, Dave Grosskopf, the architects, Maguire, Gilleski, Danielle Yur, and Ici Kimuru, and the contractor, Bully Andrews, and design installation systems, Phil Robertson, and Michael Tracy could step forward. This award is given for the restoration, replacement, and cleaning of windows and masonry at Swift Hall and Swift Hall Annex, and is an example of how historic and replacement elements can be well-matched. The restored window elements are finished nicely, and the interior is exquisite. So thank you very much for your work on that project.[530.01][530.01](Applause). The next award we're going to give this evening is also for proper rehabilitation and restoration. The owner of this project is represented by the Lighthouse Park District, Joseph Beals and Don Terrace, the architect Stephen Knutson, and the contractor is Iceland Builders. This project, located at 2601 Sheridan Road, is the restoration of the Grosspoint Lighthouse, which took several years of perseverance by the applicants to come to fruition. While the project was large in magnitude, attention was paid to the finest details of this work, including beading joints and the replication of the original base of the structure. This is obviously a pretty important project to the city of Evanston, so...[581.16][581.16](Applause). Dave and... You guys could just step down to the end there. We'll take one big group photo at the end.[591.41][591.41](Laughter). Thank you.[593.41][593.41](Laughter). The next award we'll give this evening is, excuse me, is also for proper rehabilitation and restoration of a project. This one, the owner, again, Northwestern University, represented by Robert Carlton, the architects, H.B.R.A., represented by Dennis Rupert, and the contractor, W.B. Olson, Mike Shadowski. This project, located at 1970 Campus Drive, is the restoration of the Deering Hall's, Deering Hall Library's west main entrance. This project maintains the integrity of the building's west facade and has been well-integrated with surrounding landscape elements, sensitivity being paid to the restored and new interior hall elements, including keeping and retaining the security inserts, the security apparatus to a minimum. This is an exquisite project, and the commission was thrilled to see it when it came through our commission before, and its execution has been outstanding. So thank you very much for your work on this project.[664.44][664.44](Applause). The next project, the next project we'll recognize this evening is given an award for innovative solutions in preservation. This project goes to 22, 225 Greenwood Street. And the owner is the Evanston History Center, represented by Chris Hartzell, who's already standing in front. The architects, Altus Works, Ellen Stoner and Scott Utter. Engineering firm is Ace Incorporated, Mark Nussbaum, and the contractor, again, is Bully Andrews, represented by Phil Robertson.[707.01][707.01](Applause). In the words of one juror, "The applicant could have made a lot of mistakes on the ambitious installation of geothermal heating and cooling systems into a national landmark." But they didn't. The work is nearly indiscernible from the interior and exterior of the Dawes House. This is an outstanding example of how preservation and sustainability can merge and create a beautiful project. So we thank you very much for your attention to this project and your care of this building.[732.82][732.82](Applause). The next award this evening is for sensitive addition and alteration. The owner, again, Northwestern University, represented by Andrew McGonigal. That's our Andrew here. The, also by the Kappa Gamma Sorority. The architects, Dearborn Architects, represented by Homan Wong. And the contractor, again, is W.B. Olson, represented by David Olson.[762.62][762.62](Applause). At 1871 Orienton Avenue, the design and integration of access ramp with the front terrace adjacent to the sidewalk minimizes visibility and impact in the adjacent courtyard, cleverly giving the new terrace prominence. The new ramp and terrace are not out of scale in comparison to the original design, and the use of materials and textures and characteristics are similar to the original. Again, this is a very elegantly integrated project, so thank you very much for that.[792.82][792.82](Applause). The next award, also given for sensitive addition and alteration, is given to 701 Forest Avenue. The owners, Chris and Corey Pickett. The architects are Shoemaker Design Associates. Suzanne Shoemaker.[809.04][809.04](Laughter). And the contractor is Francisco Torres. And I don't know if Francisco's here or not. He's supposed to be here. This project included the removal of a large, very old hedge and the replacement of a screen porch, which completely transforms the street facade of this unique Italianate home. Great attention was paid to the detail, including a full restoration of the original entry doors, replication of brackets and finials to match those on the upper levels.[839.11][839.11](Applause). And the last project, or the next project, sorry, on our list of awards, is also an innovative solution in preservation. The owner, again, Northwestern University, represented by Steve Matts. The architects, Landon Bone Baker, with Pete Landon, the contractor, Bully Andrews, Phil Robertson. We're going to have to get him a wheelbarrow.[866.57][866.57](Laughter). This award goes to 726 University Place. Chapin Hall's restoration is a very well-done, sensitive design that incorporates new elements in order to accommodate mobility-impaired students and visitors. As described in this application, the design, construction, and ownership team went to great lengths to make sure this work matched the original design and characteristics of the building.[888.98][888.98](Applause). Our last award for a project this evening is for a sensitive addition and alteration. It is also given the Marjorie Perkins Award, which is a special award given by the jury to a project of exquisite quality. This project, this award goes to Tom Ryan and Anna Miller, the architects, Roberts Architects, with David Roberts, and the contractor, Callahan and Peters, Dave Peters.[921.82][921.82](Applause). 1225 Oak Avenue. This is a relocation of an original, of a nonoriginal entry door and the introduction of small windows into the front facade, which are small changes that have a major impact on the character of the house. The applicant has used historic real estate listings and permit sketches to inform the design. Thank you very much.[944.61][944.61](Applause). And the last award we'll give this evening is for Preservationist of the Year. We don't give, we do not often give this award, but we do. It's for very good reason. And this evening, the award is given to Donald Terrace, who's the Director of the Lighthouse District of Evanston and the Grosspoint Lighthouse, which is a national landmark. Mr. Terrace has dedicated over 30 years in performing the duties as Director of the Lighthouse Park District and the Grosspoint Lighthouse. And some of his accomplishments, among many, include establishing a permanent lighthouse preservation fund, obtaining grants and managing the restoration and reconstruction of the Grosspoint Lighthouse, placing the Grosspoint Lighthouse and the Park District in a positive national spotlight. He's authored award-winning books on the history of lighthouse, of the lighthouse, and a second book on lighthouses of the Chicago Harbor, and is also the author of a nomination that resulted in the Grosspoint Lighthouse obtaining National Historic Landmark designation from the Department of the Interior. We'd like to thank you very much for that. This has become a symbol of Evanston, and something that the commission and the city can all be very proud of. So thank you very much.[1012.61][1012.61](Applause). Thank you all for your work. And I would also, a short plug, one of the things the Preservation Commission does every year is a workshop. This year's workshop will focus on sustainability and preservation and how the two things can coexist. I hope that all of you, or most of you, can join us on Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Dawes House, which will include a panel of speakers to talk about preservation issues, sustainability issues, and culminate with a tour of the award-winning Dawes House geothermal installations. Thank you very much.[1043.45][1043.45](Applause). I almost forgot the most important part. I'd like to invite all the award recipients and members of these teams to join us in room 2200 on this floor for a short reception to celebrate our accomplishments this year. Thank you very much.
That's why, that's why those kids are here.[1072.14][1072.14](Laughter).
I should have said something here and there. I didn't think about it.
Dar always has it all together, but I didn't see her today because...
She still has it all together.
She did. I just didn't search the room well enough.[1091.08][1091.08](Laughter). Because when I don't see it, it's, then it's just to announce. It's not...
Why don't you show that one?[1103.58][1103.58](Laughter). I know mine, I know mine.[1108.14][1108.14](Laughter).
You're irritating.
Thank you.
Next, the next item is the Youth Action Ministry Juneteenth Recognition Day 2014. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Freedom Day, or Emancipation Day, is a holiday in the United States that commemorates the announcement of the abolition of slavery in the U.S. state of Texas in 1865, more generally, the emancipation of African-American citizens throughout the United States. And whereas Juneteenth is celebrated on June 19th, the term is a portmanteau of June and 19th, and is recognized as a state holiday or special day of observance in most states. And whereas the Youth Action Ministry, a not-for-profit education outreach program in Evanston, Illinois, recognizes Juneteenth by continuing to be a leading force in the total growth and development of today's African-American youth. And whereas the Youth Action Ministry has conducted programs, including drug seminars, HIV/AIDS seminars, job placement seminars, teen pregnancy seminars, tutoring programs, black college retreats, and other workshops and fundraising events. And whereas the Youth Action Ministry's goal is to facilitate religious, social, and educational growth of the youth in the Evanston community programs, now therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim June 18, 2014, as Juneteenth Community Recognition Day in the city of Evanston, and I would like to present you with this framed proclamation.[1253.51][1253.51](Applause). City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I had an opportunity last week with the Corporation Council to meet with the President of CARE, as well as their legal counsel, to discuss the status of funds that they have raised for animals in Evanston. I raised with Ms. Gelb and her counsel the issues that have been discussed here at the City Council, and asked that we continue a dialogue over the potential use of those funds for animals in Evanston. The response from CARE was one of interest to continue a dialogue. Their legal counsel and Mr. Farrar will be exchanging information here over the next several days, and it's our hope that we would meet again soon. From those discussions, I really bring no firm decisions or firm commitments from CARE. However, I think the atmosphere in the meeting indicated that there was some willingness on their part to have additional discussions, so I took that as being a positive. We will conclude those discussions, hopefully, in the very short term. My guess is that we'll be able to come back to you at your meeting on June 23, hopefully with a final report, either moving forward with some arrangements or not. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And that concludes my reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two communications I want to give this evening. One sad occasion on the announcement of Leek Schimmerhorn, who was a retired police officer here in Evanston, who passed. And his visitation will be held this Friday, I mean, this Friday, the 30th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Journey Care Hospice Center, and that's in 405 North Lake Juric Road in Barrington in Illinois. On a happy occasion, this Friday, they'll be celebrating Cop on the Top. So please come by Dunkin' Donuts and support the Cops on the Top as they raise funds for the Special Olympics. So just come on out, we'll be up there from 6:00 a.m. in the morning until 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. So come and support your Cops on the Top. That's up.
Thank you very much.
And the police appreciation celebration is tomorrow, 3:00 p.m. We'll be outside on, in front of the police station. Then we'll have a reception for everybody to come in. So the community is invited to come out and partake of the Policeman Appreciation Day.
Thank you very much. Next is Citizen Comment. I'm going to read the first four names. You each have three minutes. Please give your name and address. Sean Dekker, Nikki Hiltwine, Jan Berksen, and Jesse Roel.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, my name is Sean Dekker. I'm a 33-year resident of Evanston, and I'm one of the principals in Sketchbook Brewing Company. During the approval process we've gone through, it's often easy to hear the negative rather than the positive, and I wanted to take just a very brief amount of time to talk about some of the positive support we've gotten from the community. One of the ways to gauge this support is through the Kickstarter campaign that we ran, successfully raising $25,000 with 250 individual donors that donated to our company. And quite a few of these supporters were from Evanston, and I'd like to just share a few of the names of these supporters. The more significant of these supporters are going to be, will have their names on our, what we call our Wall of Heroes in the brewery, which is basically going to be all of the people in the community of Evanston who have supported us in a significant way. A few of those names, this is not a complete list, but a few of them, and many of these names you may recognize because many of these people are quite active in the community in and of themselves. Larry Indebra Manheim, Anne Berkeley, who is currently the co-chair of the Evanston Arts Council. Jan Berksen and Jeff Berksen. Emily Nidenberg, Sheila Barnes. Michael Greenberg. Steven Schwartz, who is the owner and one of our neighbors at Campaniola. Karen Gray and Tom Keeler. Catherine Ware. Lee Nagin. George Stevenson. Dave Fodor, the beloved band director, longtime band director at ETHS. Catherine Ware. I'm sorry, Barbara Creeter. Mark Metz and Norine Edwards. You would know Mark from the District 65 School Board. Carol Barbaro and Jim Reardon. William Banzev, Kathy Shannon. Suzanne Auburn. Patrick McFagin. Elaine Frankiadakis. Scott Segal. Doug and Susan Weinberg. Susan Manning and Doug Deutsch, who are neighbors and right around the corner from the brewery. Ann Wilson. Joe Taylor. Laurie Keenan. And finally, John Kim, who is one of the Brothers K, another one of our neighborhood partners and friends, who is basically working on a number of collaborations with us. We're now part of that neighborhood, and we have a five-year lease, and we're, you know, planning on staying there. We're planning on contributing and supporting other kinds of not-for-profits and other kinds of activities in the neighborhood. We've already donated services to the Lincoln School through their latest fundraiser, to the Evanston Arts Center for their fundraiser held just a couple of weeks ago, and finally to the childcare at the Center of Evanston. So we plan on continuing to support those kinds of organizations in the neighborhood. As neighbors, we have some of the same concerns, as I know, that have been raised by other people in the neighborhood. So as someone who's operating a business out of the area in Maine and Chicago, we're certainly concerned about traffic. We're certainly concerned about safety. We share the same concerns that have been raised, and we've already spoken with Alderman Nguyen about these issues.
I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. And we're, you know, going to be very dedicated to making sure that everything is absolutely taken care of in those areas. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Hiltwine. I live at 820 Hinman. I'm speaking for myself on behalf of my neighbors at 822 and 824 Hinman. Congratulations to Sketchbook. Welcome to the neighborhood. Welcome to the alley. Hopefully, we'll all get along. It'll all work out, and we'll all be happy. And I truly hope that's the case. But the fact of the matter is, when Sketchbook came for a liquor license, there were no regulations in place, and no nano-brewery retail goods establishment precedent ever to set to support the zoning department's decision to classify this brewery in a way that allowed it to be a permitted use in a zoning district in C-1A. Sketchbook filed for a special use permit and should have been considered a special use at that time. The decision to permit it by right deprived the property owners in the residential zoning district across the alley of our right to challenge this type of use in this alley location. location through what should have been a mandatory special use process. That was one. Number two, Sketchbook came to the city for a license in January. The property owners across the alley did not find out about it until April, and that was purely by accident. And we think this is a very sad and disappointing situation. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, my name is Jan Berksen. I'm a citizen of Evanston for 35 years, and I've known Sean Dekker for many, many years. And I just, I am here tonight just to say he's a very solid citizen, along with his partner. I feel the Sketchbook Brewery is a very exciting and unique addition to Evanston, and my husband and I both fully support it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, my name is Jesse Rowell. I live at 918 Madison Street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my wife. We are friends with Caesar and his wife Amy and supportive of Sketchbook. I've known the family for several years. I'm an eight-year resident of Evanston myself. Our children go to school together. I hardly ever see Caesar and Amy around town without their children, and I just wanted to acknowledge that because I don't think they would ever go into a business that wasn't a benefit to the community or would do anything to dismerch the community. And then as myself, as a patron, I'm really excited to have something like Sketchbook in the neighborhood. As a property owner, I think it will benefit all of us to have exciting things like this bringing new revenue and new tax dollars into the community. So I'm fully supportive. It'll allow one more destination to not have to leave to go into the city for something like this, and to have it in our neighborhood, I think will be great for South Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Mallow, Jeffrey Mallow, Leslie Letsnick, and Karen Strauss.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Mallow. I live at 2315 Hartzell in Evanston. I've spoken here before from my head, or at least my mouth. I would like to speak from my heart tonight about the CARE issue. I have found it a humiliating and degrading experience to be involved in this. I feel we've been turned into beggars. We and our fellow Evanstonians who gave over a million dollars to CARE for the shelter are reduced to begging Evanston, to begging you to fight for the money we gave you. You, on the advice of counsel, have told us we have no standing, which I interpret as we wash our hands of it. We have provided documentation, and still we are told that Evanston has no standing. Mr. Babkowicz has discussed the discussions he is having with CARE, and you describe them, I guess, as cordial. I don't see why CARE needs to negotiate at all. It already knows that Evanston has no standing by Evanston standards and is not going to put up a fight. However this turns out, I must say that my sense of humiliation and degradation will endure. This has been my first active foray into local politics, and it has not been a nobling experience.
We're just going to switch. I'm Karen Strauss. I'm going to go.
You go right ahead.
I'm Karen Strauss. I'm a 20-year resident of Evanston. I have volunteered at the Evanston Animal Shelter faithfully every week for 14 years. I have participated in almost every single fundraiser that took place during those 14 years. And our goal during that time was to raise money for the shelter. When I started volunteering in January of 2014, we all acknowledged that the building needed work. We were all gung ho about raising money to build or expand a new shelter here in Evanston. And that is why I showed up at the Strutford Strays, at every dog wash, with my children. I worked hard for 14 years so that we could have a better shelter in Evanston. I appreciate the fact that you're negotiating with the CARE Board. I appreciate that a great deal. But there are two things I want you to keep in mind while you negotiate. First of all, it was a million and a third as of the tax document that was filed as of December 31st, 2012. There's no question it's a whole lot more by now. It's got to be at least a million and a half. And second, all of it, 100% of that money belongs here in Evanston to improve the shelter, which was why we worked so hard to raise it. I mean, I don't have to tell you that the City Council passed a resolution authorizing CARE to be the exclusive fundraising arm for the shelter. All that money was raised for the shelter. And I certainly hope that we get a report on June 23rd. The report that we're going to get is that million and a half is going to stay here in Evanston because CARE, certainly the CARE Board, has an interest in avoiding an investigation by the Attorney General's Office. And in order to avoid that type of investigation, certainly I think they would gladly hand over the money and to avoid the investigation, as long as it is clear that that threat is real. So I'm looking forward to June 23rd, and I'm looking forward to a favorable report. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Nathan. I've been a volunteer for the Evanston Animal Shelter since the mid-'90s, have participated in many fundraisers, and donated money myself for the Evanston Animal Shelter and the CARE of the animals living there. For many years, CARE ran a campaign to expand the Evanston Animal Shelter and raised quite a bit of money. There was an official agreement between Evanston and CARE in which Evanston designated CARE the official fundraiser for their animal shelter. The expansion never happened. The relationship has now been severed, and CARE thinks that they're entitled to the money that was raised for the Evanston Animal Shelter. I strongly disagree. I did not donate money to CARE, and I'm appalled that they think they can take that money, money that was donated for the shelter and the animals, to go start a rescue elsewhere. They raised that money when they were CARE for the Evanston Animal Shelter. Just changing their name and deciding at the board meeting to move money out of the building fund into their operating fund and dissolve the relationship with Evanston without notifying Evanston doesn't mean they can take the money raised in the name of Evanston and confiscate it. Besides being unethical and immoral, is it even legal? I thought of an analogy, like if a disgruntled woman, wife, decided to change her name legally, does she then decide that she's divorced because she changed her name? So I don't think that CARE for the Evanston Animal Shelter can just change their name and go off with the money and start something else. It's not why I donated money. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is June Adreski and Betty Esther.
I'm going to be short on the agenda topic tonight. I'm going to speak on SP 1 because apparently the information wasn't posted until very near the end of the day today, so I haven't had time to review it. What's interesting, probably three or four council meetings ago when this was presented, staff made the comment they were investigating this because of the sledding going on on the hill. And we all know that not to be misleading, of course, tonight, so we'll learn more. But what I want to hear again, I haven't had time to review the report, so I'll be interested after I review them in a week or next week, whenever the council meeting is, to come back and look at everything. But I think it's quite interesting, and I'll close on that.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. Tonight I speak on kind of what I see and have heard as to how things are done here. In the past several months, meetings, there have been decisions on different items, things that have come to the council. And when it is not really clear as to what impact it is going to have on the whole of Evanston, when there is not a clear, clear impact study that is done that shows that these decisions that you make will have on the whole of Evanston or will have a negative impact on part of Evanston, then there should be community meetings where everyone is at the table. We talk about a livable city. We talk about fairness, transparency. For these words to really, truly have meaning, then the whole community has to be at the table because the whole meaning, the whole community tax dollars are collected every year. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. City Manager, we have a special order of business.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we're here this evening to give you an update on work that we have been doing at James Park to monitor the former landfill site. Our Fire Chief Greg Cliber is here, and he will start with a report. We also have, as part of this agenda item, a request that I be authorized to execute an amendment to our contract with Environmental Consulting Services, for Environmental Consulting Services, with the CS Geological LLC of Libertyville in the amount not to exceed $58,167 for additional study of the property. So that is the item before you. But first, I'd like to ask Chief Cliber to give an update as to what we have found thus far and what our next steps are. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Tisdall, City Clerk Green, Members of the City Council, Greg Cliber, Fire Chief. I wanted to give you an update on what has happened at the James Park site since upon discovery of high concentrations of methane on the site. And what we have before us here on the screen is an overview of James Park as well as the surrounding neighborhood. If you look at the lower left-hand corner, that's the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District site. That's where the initial findings were of methane. And in the upper right corner, that is James Park, and you see the surrounding red dots. Those are all the sites that the city has engaged a firm to conduct core testing at levels 50 feet below the surface. Those levels, we did find high concentrations of methane gas. When I found out that there was high levels of methane gas below the surface in this area, my number one concern, of course, is public safety. Methane gas is a compressed gas. It is an asphyxiant, and it's colorless and odorless. So it comes, there's, problems can occur in a confined space. So what we decided to do was take our monitors that we currently use on our department, we have them on our, two of our, four of our pieces of apparatus, and we immediately went inside facilities, inside James Park, Dawes School, the Levy Center, the Field House. And we also conducted testing in some of the businesses in the Howard Street, the Best Buy and the Target, those businesses right there. And what we have found were zero or negligible levels of methane gas inside the facilities as well as outside. So we conducted the testing in ambient air and then went inside in various locations within the facilities and have conducted the monitoring over the last several weeks. And Jonathan, if you can pull up, I believe there's one more slide. This is kind of difficult to see, but what you can see in the middle of it is zeros. And this is kind of an update at Dawes School and Levy Center. And you'll see a number in the middle of 4.5 and 4. I don't want to alarm anybody with what those numbers are. What that really is telling us is that the type of monitors that we use, that number there is telling us that on that particular day, at that particular time, we were 96% or 95.5% away from the lower explosive limit of methane gas. So our monitors give us a reading of a lower explosive limit, and if we come close to that, it alerts us. And then we have other SOG standard operating guidelines in place once that occurs. We're nowhere near that. We're 96% away on one day at the lower explosive limit. Methane gas has a 5% lower explosive limit and a 15% upper explosive limit. Anything in between those two levels, methane with an ignition source could explode. We're nowhere near that. We're well below at all the sites that we have taken readings. So I believe there is no imminent threat to any public safety in and around James Park and any of the facilities located within or around James Park. We met today with various user groups of James Park, all the youth sports teams. This afternoon at 4:00, we gave them the information that we're giving you today, this evening. And there were a few questions, but for the most part, everybody was quite satisfied with the report, and we gave them the information of where to find further information if they needed to on the city's website. We've been, we will continue to remain vigilant and continue to monitor. And then we need to come up with a plan on what to do and what the next steps are and how to vent the levels of methane that are present currently. So I think I covered that all, and if anybody has any questions regarding the public safety issues, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is there any questions? I know, Chief, that I spoke with Superintendent Goran before he became Superintendent Goran, and I believe Grant Farrar did, did you as well?
Yes, we've communicated, yeah, yes, we have.
So he is well-informed about all of this.
Yeah, Superintendent Goran has been, we, our staff, my staff, as well as District 65 staff have worked cooperatively and been inside their facility with their cooperation. Yeah.
Thank you. It's just the term you used, explosive. That's like, ah.
Madam Mayor, a couple of other points, if I may. Chief Cliber, we have another park facility that has had other uses over time. Lovelace Park, could you talk about what we're doing to monitor and investigate any potential issues there?
We, and as, today we were out at Lovelace Park, and we were inside the facility there as well. Readings there were zero. We'll continue to monitor Lovelace Park in similar fashion that we're doing at James Park. And then dependent upon what we find and the source of the methane at James Park will kind of determine what action we're going to take moving forward at Lovelace Park. But we will continue to monitor with our department monitors inside the facility at Lovelace as well as around Lovelace Park.
Alderman, tandem.
Do we, do we have a history of Lovelace Park? I'm not even sure, I don't know, but I'm not sure if people know what's in there. And it was landfill and possibly refuse, but I don't know. Is there any record of what went on back then?
Mr. Farrar has a history on that.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Clerk Green, Grant Farrar, Corporation Council. With respect to Lovelace Park, I believe it's listed on the inventory. The Northeast Illinois Planning Commission is a former landfill site, and there was a city-operated landfill there. So what we propose to do is, when we are reasonably comfortable with the site assessment and source assessment of the gas at James Park, what we propose to do is take the testing personnel, the testing equipment... the testing personnel, the testing equipment, demobilize at James Park, move them up to Lovelace, mobilize there, and follow the same sort of protocols. So, as things unfold at James Park, they will necessarily impact what we do at Lovelace Park. It will be very similar, certainly cannot hazard a guess or speculate as to what we will encounter up there, but we will follow the same sort of protocol to find out what, if anything, is of concern up there.
And Madam Mayor, we're also really committed to making sure the community is fully aware of these issues. We have placed the documents you've seen this evening are already on our website, along with some additional information from the consultants that we have hired. We also have a plan for a community meeting, Mr. McCray, coming up later in the week, is that correct?
Thursday, the 29th.
Thursday, the 29th, at 7:00 at James, at the Levy Center. So, we will have our team there. Depending on the size of crowd, it may just end up being sort of an open house for people to come in and ask questions. We'll be prepared to make a formal presentation, but we want to give people the opportunity to come and ask questions one-on-one, so that'll occur on the 29th. So, unless there's any additional questions, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll keep you apprised of this as we move forward. We believe we have good information, are getting, continuing to get a good information, and will take whatever necessary remediation issues may be necessary at James Park.
Alderman Rainey.
Yeah, City Manager, would you mind telling us how you're going to notify the community of this meeting?
We just did.
That was it? Because this is the first I've heard of it, and I'm the Alderman in the ward. So, I'm a little concerned that I did not know about this before now, because Thursday night is, what, Wednesday Thursday? I mean, I don't think that is the best way, I mean, we had a resident here tonight complaining that he didn't know anything well, you know? I didn't know anything either. I'm not happy.
Thanks, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no further lights.
Thank you.
I believe that covers it. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
So, the consent agenda, Madam Mayor, is as follows. We ask your approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, May 12. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and asks your approval of the payroll through May 4 in the amount of $2,514,169.76. The city bills through May 28 in the amount of $2,192,895.8. We ask your approval for the manager to execute a contract for the 2014 Water Main Replacement and Street Resurfacing CIP Number 2 project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors in the amount Approval is also requested to execute a contract for the 2014 Street Improvement Project CIP Number 3, also to ALAMP Contractors, in the amount of $1,200,128,934.10. Approval is also requested for the authorization of the manager to execute a new agreement with ADT Security Systems, now called Tyco Integrated Security, for the monitoring of city facilities at the cost of $13,860 per year, and the initial term of the agreement is five years. We ask your approval also to adopt Resolution 25R14, authorizing the manager to execute the intergovernmental law enforcement mutual aid agreement with other municipalities and public agencies in Illinois who are members of the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System. Approval is requested for the adoption of Resolution 26R14, authorizing the manager to execute an emergency equipment memorandum of understanding between the City of Evanston and Cook County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to provide emergency event and disaster response assistance through the use of the Homeland Security and Emergency Management System to provide equipment and when local resources are insufficient to meet the response needs of the City of Evanston. We ask your approval also to renew Resolution 31R14, which renews an easement agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago, which will allow the City of Evanston to maintain and repair an existing 48-inch diameter storm sewer along Poplar Avenue. We request approval also for Resolution 39R14, declaring a surplus of $1 million from the Howard Hartree Tax Increment Financing District at the end of fiscal year 2013. I'm leaving that on the agenda, but have some issues with it. The MW, is this off the consent agenda? NWEB, all right, Ordinance 60014A8 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 64014, we request approval for introduction of this ordinance, which the city council would authorize paving of the alley north of Leonard Place, east of Wesley Avenue, through special assessment process. Funding is provided by $99,968 from the special assessment account and $99,968 from the CIP budget for alley paving. This is for introduction. Ordinance 42014 is for action. We ask that you adopt this ordinance, which amends the Class P1 liquor license. Recognizing different business models, a new subsection, Class P2, was created to classify larger craft breweries selling beer at retail and addressing food service and product consumption in craft brewery taprooms. For action also, city council is requested to adopt the Ordinance 49014, which amends city code of 2012 subsection 346P1.
Alderman Rainey, would you take that off, please?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. This is the Sketchbook Brewing Company ordinance. Next is A12. We ask your approval to adopt Ordinance 23014, which will regulate the placement and appearance of collection boxes within the City of Evanston. It requires entities interested in placing a collection box to obtain a license from the City of Evanston for a fee. Evanston-based not-for-profits such as Evanston School Children's Clothing and the YWCA must obtain a license but are exempt from paying the license fee. This is for action. Under Planning and Development, Madam Mayor, we request approval to introduce for a special use permit for a Type 2 restaurant, Yo Fresh Yogurt Cafe, at 635 Chicago Avenue, Unit Number 7. This will allow a specialty Type 2 restaurant to occupy a vacant commercial space in an existing strip mall. Also, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move to suspend the rules for this ordinance, so that the committee chair can move for action this evening. The same goes for P2. Ordinance 72014 extends an existing special use for the convenience store at 555 Howard to allow it to remain open until 10:00 instead of 8:00. I'm moving for introduction, and am also moving to suspend the rules as approved by the committee, and the committee chair will move for action on this matter. Next, we ask your approval for a first-time application for sidewalk cafe permit for the Lucky Platter, a Type 1 restaurant, at 514 Main Street. We ask your approval also for Ordinance 56014, amending the zoning ordinance to establish a definition and land use regulations for aquaponics. An aquaponic establishment would be allowed as a special use in B, C, I, and M districts. We ask your approval also, no, we don't. Item P5, staff is recommending that this ordinance be continued till June 9. If nobody has a problem with that, we'll move on. Human Services Committee met a few weeks ago and asks your approval to adopt the Title 5, Chapter 1 Property Maintenance Code. It's the International Property Maintenance Code of 2012 with the proposed amendments. Madam Mayor has recommended for appointment to the Board of Animal Control, Ruth Ann Haldish. With that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn? Sorry about that. Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The consent agenda is passed. I goofed, and we need a vote on the James Park landfill site monitoring.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I knew that, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I request council approval on authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract for environmental consulting services with CS Geological LLC in an amount not to exceed $58,167.65.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Will we include?
Oh, I'm... SP1.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. Thank you. Next, Administration and Public Works, Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move Ordinance 60-0-14, amending the minority women in Evanston Business Base Employer and Local Employment Program.
Second.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I'm cognizant of the fact that we need to make some changes and need to make adjustments to have this become a more effective program, or at least an effective program. But I feel very strongly that we should also be including the contractors that have been on the jobs as part of this conversation. So, I'm looking at this as a bit of an opportunity to find out exactly why they're not hiring our people, what they need as far as programs are concerned. I've seen materials regarding other programs. I think Tacoma, Washington was suggested as a, another program. But one of the things that I see from other programs is that they have apprenticeship programs in place, things that already exist, to provide a pool of qualified, trained employees. So, I would like to hold this for, for that to take place. I think part of the city manager's recommendation included generally that suggestion that there be meetings with the contractors, and I don't think it's appropriate to pass the punishment until we've figured out exactly what the program is going to end up looking like. So, I'd like to move to hold this until we've had that opportunity to talk to the contractors.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to hold it. Oops.
All right. Okay, Madam, then, A11, Ordinance 49-0-14, increasing the BRP-1 liquor license for common culture beer company doing business at Sketchbook Brewing Company at 825 Chicago Avenue, Suite E2.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to comment a little bit about Sketchbook Brewing and the discussions I've had with them about their location and their new business. I welcome this new type of business to Evanston. I think they have a lot of community support, but there are also some community concerns about having a business in an alley, in a busy alley. And so, I have talked to Sketchbook, and they have agreed that they will improve the lighting at their location, which is good for them, and it's good for everyone else. And when I asked them how they could work on the problem of not having anyone pull up and park in the alley, which is prohibited, they said they would put in a camera on the outside of the business and maintain a monitor on the inside, so that they could tell their potential customers to go park legally and then come back. So, and they have offered to do that. I think it's a very good solution, and it's a good one for the community. So, with those additional conditions, which I've asked the city staff to memorialize, I'm in support of this new type of business.
Thank you. So, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 49014, increasing P1 liquor licenses for common culture beer Sketchbook Brewing Company. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment on some of the citizen comment that was made on this, which I thought was extremely helpful and helps us, you know, really think through this.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Holmes, does that complete your report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Planning and Development, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please note, P2, it was introduced and the rules were suspended, and therefore, I move action on Ordinance 72014, extending the hours by two hours for the convenience store at the 555 Howard Street Gas Station, Marathon Gas Station.
What about P1?
P1, you suspended, wasn't it?
Not P1, P2.
Okay, I did P2. I can, I'll do P1. Oh, okay. But I just did P2.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to P2? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, at the request of Alderman Wynn, I moved introduction and suspension of the rules for Yo Fresh Yogurt Cafe at 635 Chicago Avenue, and now I move approval. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve suspending the rules for action, approve Ordinance Seeing no lights for discussion of the issue, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, on P5, evidently, we're still working on some of the definition and land use issue regulations for craft breweries, and we're holding it until June 9.
Thank you very much. All right. We are at call of the wards. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remind folks that this coming weekend, on May 31, 2:00 p.m. at Fleetwood Jordan, is the, I don't know how many they've had, but it's an annual spelling bee for senior citizens. And I've heard it's a lot of fun. This is a big deal. The winner of this competition goes on to compete regionally, and then there are state, there's a state bee as well. So, it's 2:00 this coming Saturday. You can register online through the Levy Center website, or you can just sign up at the door at 2:00 on Saturday. And I am, will be one of the judges, so. I don't know how that happened, but I'll have a cheat sheet. Thank God.
Good luck, Alderman Tendem. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, I don't know if the TV can get this. The Site Festival, the Northwestern... The Site Festival, the Northwestern Theater Program that's running from May 23 through June 8 is in full swing, and I attended opening night on Howard Street. All of their productions are in non-traditional theater spaces. And I must say, the, the production I saw called Far Away was absolutely brilliant. And the set design on a vacant building that the city owns was spectacular. That these people did this work, and this building is just amazing. So I encourage everybody to check this out. It's $10 a show and just unbelievable. Really, really very impressive. And I believe it's master's thesis from the drama department. Three, three productions were selected, and those are the ones, they're simultaneous in all three locations. So while we might have gas at James Park, we have theater on Howard Street.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
Not following that.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, a lot going on in the first ward, so please attend the first ward meeting Tuesday, June 3, at the library, beginning at 7:00 p.m. Look forward to seeing all of you out there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind everyone in the third ward, we're having a third ward town hall meeting at Lincoln School from 7:00 to 8:30 on Thursday, May 29.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I'm sorry. I just want to remind everyone that this coming weekend, this Saturday, is the Mayfest, better known as Diller Day Northwestern, especially the neighbors on the east side of the ward, just to remind you that it is Diller Day this weekend.
Thank you. Will we be going around in a squad car as usual together?
Yes, ma'am. I think we will.
I'm up for it. All right. Alderman Rainey?
I mean, I just noticed that Alderman Wynn is having a ward meeting on Thursday night, which is the same night as the meeting at the Levy Center, is it not? Is that the same, is that the Thursday we're meeting at the Levy Center?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have dinner plans with several previous ex-aldermen that night, which is a very special occasion for me. I knew nothing about it. I, I'm sure that Alderman Wynn has people going to her meeting who have kids playing in that park who might be interested. I'm asking you to please change the date of that meeting.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, as we prepared for the announcement this evening, we had anticipated having a meeting. Certainly, if that date is not convenient, I think we just wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the issues. We have put the issues on the website. Certainly, they can contact my office, they can contact the fire chief to get additional information, and we'd be happy to reschedule the meeting. I think the, the thought was to make time available as soon as possible. So if that date is not convenient, we will find another date. And my apologies, but in our discussions leading up to this evening, we had thought that it would make sense to have a community meeting as soon as possible.
The meeting is very important. It's absolutely very important for most of us also. But I'm asking you to change the date, maybe to the next week.
And so for members of the Evanston press, I will say that that date is not going to happen then on Thursday, and that we'll let you know as soon as it is rescheduled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights for, for the discussion, Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation in minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2A, C11, and C21.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
8:56 p.m.